All right, I have to call for my turn. A motion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all. Any other comments tonight? Let's go ahead and do your call. Deb?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
Could I maybe make a suggestion? The person that's doing the legal is not here yet. And I haven't heard from him why there's a delay. So if you might maybe want to move that to the bottom of the agenda.
Okay.
Give a little extra time if they're, I know they're coming from a couple hours away.
That's fine.
I'll make the motion to approve as amended.
Okay. Michelle second to approve the agenda as amended. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda.
I reviewed all the claims on account table and I'll check today.
Is that something we all need to take turns doing or?
Looking at the claim?
Yeah.
No, in fact, we're, once we get, once we have a new audit, that process has been around for a while before there was a city administrator and before there was a divvying up of the responsibilities. So I have a, once we get audited this time, the new auditor will have suggestions for-
Okay. I just didn't know if it was something like-
Yeah, no.
We were all supposed to be taking turns doing it. I didn't know.
No, I mean, you're more than welcome to-
No, I don't mean it.
But no, we'll have the auditor review the current process and make sure that, that everything is up to current standards. Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan? Jason?
Yes.
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 The new business, number six, motion to sign correctly and amended quickly needs for 505 and 507 Commercial Street. I'll make motion.
Second.
Michelle second to discuss.
Okay, so this is a piece of property that is being transferred. And they found that the original quitclaim deed that was issued many, many, many years ago had a mistake in it. So this is undisputed. This is just correcting the mistake of the last quitclaim deed that was pushed through. The lawyer has a full write-up in the board packet. But yeah, there's no, there's no issues here or objections by anybody. So it's just cleaning up the language of the description of the property. Is this at the expense of the city to clean this up or is it at the expense of the homeowners? It's no expense on our end. This is, all this work has already been done. Okay. They're just, we just need, they just need our approval to file it with the county. Yeah, so no, no cost on our end at all. Perfect.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Number seven, motion to approve use of fire station for soup supper annual fundraiser on November first, 2024.
Make the motion for the soup supper.
I'll second. Motion second to approve use of fire-
Okay, the fire chief is here. I don't know, chief, if you want to tell us a little bit about the event. I know it's an annual event, so most, everybody probably already knows.
It's after Thanksgiving. We usually have five different soups. It's always a Sunday after Thanksgiving. Most wives don't want to cook, so.
And what, what Greek soup are you going to have on?
Chicken noodle.
All right. Very good.
All right, any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Megan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Number eight, motion to approve resolution 2440 authorizing the purchase of communication equipment for the fire department in amount not fifty, twenty-two thousand.
Hold on, we need a moment. One second.
Second. All right, motion second to discuss.
Okay, so we have the fire chief here. There's, you know, the invoice and the, some information on, the devices are in the packet. But I wonder if the fire chief could give us a brief update on what these are. And then also differentiate, because one council member had a question about the other communication equipment that there's a grant with the county with, and these are different. So if you could give us a rundown, that would be great.
So in a way, the county is going to a UHF frequency communication. So the communication between car, car to county is supposed to be a lot clearer and is supposed to be ninety-five percent signal, any everywhere they're going. The paging is going to be on VHF. All the talking is going to be on UHF. This pager will pick up the page on UHF and then everybody will be able to listen to what we're doing on UHF instead of buying a whole bunch of new radios at five thousand dollar a piece. This is the next thing. The most, most guys don't like talking on radio anyway. They just want to know what's going on when they come into the scene, how many trucks are out already, if there's any information, the county has given information, that'll be on our air host, which is on UHF, because they won't be talking on VHF as we're playing.
So this kind of has the functionality of having both instead of having the pager and the radio?
Yeah. So the county, I'm not sure how much they're paying for the ambulance, but they're paying... They're paying for a hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for the fire department. So they're buying all new, all new radios for the truck. They're buying four new, multiband, and then we're buying one that will give us our officer multiband radio to get talk. A base station, plus they're buying four pagers, so that'll give us enough for everybody. They're buying a repeater that goes in our rescue truck, goes off fires. So it'll go in and there repeats to go to county. So like a back home, we can't communicate, it'll go to the theater and it goes over. The ambulance service is getting seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. And I'm not quite sure what the police department, but they're, they're about sixty thousand, but we're getting about forty million dollars worth of radio equipment that the city didn't have to buy.
She said they're doing five, excuse me, five radios and four pagers, is that what you said?
They're buying us four pagers, four radios.
When does it go live with the county or is it already, is it already?
It'll go, the squad cars are already being switched over. Most, correct me, I think most of the county cars have already switched over to the new system. The police department will be next sometime in a month or two, and then the fire departments will be right after the first year.
So they're redoing all of it because of the tower that they have now? They cannot get parts to fix it, so they have to tend to fix it.
The county's going to-
Go out there. They can't get parts to fix it, yeah.
Thirty years old. They had two pieces of equipment somewhere in there go out. They bought the last two on eBay that they could find.
What's the turnaround, do you think, how soon will you be able to have these things?
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay.
Will this clarify some of the dead spots in the county?
Yes, that's, that's why.
I know they were talking about that without clarifying that.
Correct. You know, the police officer in the building, he should be able to talk to the county repeater where before sometimes they can't, their detail, they can't talk.
Any other questions? Once we've got the motion second, we'll go to vote. Jason?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to go back to number nine? That's up to you guys, if you want to shuffle it up again or if you want to wait.
That's fine. Good. Go to Deb?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll keep number nine where it was. Motion to approve resolution 2441 retaining legal services of Hopkins and Hugner.
Second.
All right, motion second to discuss.
Great, okay, so, you know, we've done a lot of homework in finding legal representation. If you guys want to come on up, and I thought we could have a few minutes, you could give us a brief introduction. The thing that stood out to me about this law firm was the, the depth and the breadth of their expertise and what they can help with. So lots of experience in municipal law, you know, workman's comp, criminal, all sorts of stuff. And so I like the versatility of the firm, and then they have a deep bench in terms of, you know, we're not always paying like for the most experienced lawyer. Sometimes we have a paralegal fee, you know, there's things that can be done. With the experience that I have in, you know, writing the resolutions and ordinance and stuff like that, we'll work together to make sure that we're keeping the legal budget as trim as humanly possible here. So I'd like to, for you guys to introduce yourselves.
Yeah, thanks. My name's Brad Hughes. I'm a sheriff, sort of one of the heads of our municipal department in our Des Moines office.
I'm Jonathan Lewis. I'm a associate attorney at the office.
And Jonathan is a new attorney, and he told me this is one of his first times in the northeast side. My, my dad's from Allison. I just figured just down the road, and someone's like, oh, Highway three, yeah, you know, know you well. So, yeah, I've been practicing about twenty years. Previously, I've been with Hopkins and Hugner for about thirteen years. I was a county attorney prior to coming there, so I had a lot of experience in municipal work, vote through that. And then we represent cities, counties, states and counties all over the state, vote through a rich school, ICAP, and also lots of counties up in this area too through additional rich school, Hartland. And then we're private representation for cities all over the state. You know, some over here in eastern Iowa, like Loudoun and Muscatine and Laclaire are city attorneys for all of them. So we, you know, we're fairly well-traveled in that area. You know, I looked at the distance on everything. If I just hadn't had a, a meeting last a little longer and, you know, it wasn't harvest season, we would've been here way sooner. But, you know, you have to calibrate correctly. Folks, yeah, just as Dino said, we practice in all sorts of areas. We have an office in Des Moines, we have an office in Davenport, we have an office in Adele, Iowa. If you ask me why in Adele, Iowa, well, people have before. If you look at the map, it's what, the biggest, fastest-growing county in the state of Iowa, Dallas. Their city, the county seat is Adele, so we do lots of real estate and sort of things through that, through that office. But really travel all over. We try, you know, we have cities of all different sizes, and we try to make sure that when we price things out, when we do things, that we're looking at your budget, what we think, you know, the expected work, what we think that, that your budget is, we're never going to do any work that isn't authorized. Do you know anything like that? We're very conscientious about that, but happy to work with any, with all of you. If you have any specific question on anything that we do or any projects that we've done, we've kind of covered the, covered the gambit of everything, both through, through litigation, direct consultation and, and city work. So happy to answer, answer any questions or anything else. And folks, if you want to talk about anything, we'll, we'll hang out for a while and see that you have a couple of things on your agenda. We'd love to help you with the, handling those session issues as well, so.
Thank you.
Be good.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Do you know what our last agreement, how much we were paying?
I don't, I don't. I could look that up.
It looks pretty comparable.
It was, it was less.
Yeah.
It was less, but this isn't out of line with other quotes that, that we looked at. This was very much in line with competitive. And in conversations like, well, we won't need to use as many hours as we've used previously just because we now have some local, you know, writing of ordinances and, and resolutions and getting those things ready. So, you know, we can now utilize our, our help in editing and making sure it's perfect rather than starting from scratch, and we'll save a ton of money that way.
And if it doesn't take an attorney or associate, and it can pass to a paralegal, you guys can pass it on down the hill then.
Exactly, down the trough until-
In fact, I also want to say, in, in just our media group, there's about six attorneys. But generally speaking, in our overall system, we normally utilize around twelve, but we have, I think, right now, thirty-three total attorneys in the system. Lots of people, lots of different specialization. One thing I try to do is if we quote you a price, and that's the price, that's the price. So no matter what sort of service you get from us, you're not going to, you know, somebody can suddenly charge you fifteen hundred bucks an hour. Our price is different, so.
Any other questions? Once we have a motion second, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Thank you guys very much. All right, number ten, motion to discuss public safety and fiscal impact of ceasing operation of speed cameras.
Motion to discuss.
All right. Motion second.
Great, so as you know, the state said no, no to our speed cameras. And just doing some initial research, you know, talking to stakeholders and people involved in this to, you know, kind of figure out like what are our implications? So obviously, we have public safety implications and we have fiscal impact implications. We'll start with public safety. You know, obviously, since word got out, and this is just anecdotal at this point, driving out of town each night going that way, people are definitely driving faster and a little bit more erratically. And, you know, our, our main concern is in the south of town where the parks are, and there's a lot of children and elderly crossing the state highway to get to and from the parks, and so we're really worried about that. Some of the things, and this is all in the report that I, that you each have. So some of the things that we're doing to mitigate the safety issues, police have increased their patrols in the area, have increased the number of citations that are being written. And, and as well as other areas around town where people have complained about speeding, you know, and we receive a complaint that, hey, our street has a lot of fast drive-by. We communicate that to the police, they up their patrols in the area, you know, try to be a little bit more vigilant. We also want to do a social media campaign with the police to sort of educate people about the dangers of speeding, and especially in areas where, you know, people might not be paying as much attention, you know, down in the south part of town. And then we want to look at some special traffic enforcement projects. You know, we have a speed trailer that shows the, you know, the site. There's some, you know, some evidence that those things help slow people down from time to time. So I'd like to move that around town. And, you know, obviously, this is very early stages, so some of the details about these haven't really been worked out. You know, we're still just trying to figure out, like, what can we do?
The DOT has a grant available that you can get, like the, those flash-in speed limit signs that you see like in some small towns.
Okay.
I know they have a grant that you can apply for. I don't know if it's like a three-pack or a two-pack or whatever, but if we could put one on the edge of the, each edge of town to let people know, like, hey, you're Andrea Piddy, yeah, that might be a-
And Dino, even though I've been to a city, I want to let you know, we're working with Laclaire and Muscatine to appeal their ATE decisions to the DOT if you guys wanted to join in on that, or sort of going through all the informational phases and working with other city attorneys to sort of figure out what's the best course and then, and then, you know, make those appeals as, maybe not in mass, but, but at least work with other cities to kind of gather information and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think that's certainly up to the city council to-
That'd be beneficial. I live on this street down there, and you knew as soon as the word got out, and it was on TV, it was ridiculous, the, the speeders and the reckless driving that's going on down on this road.
It's a perfect warning, because one of the things that they're really, that we're really talking about in the group is getting happy, that's from people that live in the neighborhood, that have businesses, that have, you know, those sorts of things, especially daycare, those sorts of things. Because then when you present that, that would be part of the, part of the tactic they could reconsider.
Right, so why don't we prepare something for the next board meeting to, because I'm assuming we would have to have a resolution to join in or have, you know?
Yeah, and I would call you, Jonathan, when we had last Friday, was that when we had our, we had kind of like a big soup meeting with everybody across the state that got denied. And we're going to have another meeting here probably. We're meeting with, with Claire kind of personally and Muscatine as well, so we're just gathering the information and then trying to, trying to get it all together. But there's, there's sort of a central group there too.
Great. All right, I'll prepare something for the next meeting, because I don't want to continue discussion on it because it wasn't on the agenda, so I want to make sure that no direction is given tonight on it.
Right.
But I'll prepare a resolution.
So how many more tickets have been written by you guys since the speed cameras? Like out, by the-
I don't know if you had the, I did a little report, but I think this, this last month we had a hundred and thirty-six calls for service and we had sixty-one traffic stop, sixty-one traffic stops, thirty-one, or thirty-seven, I think, or something else.
So like, I'm just talking, like, since the cameras have been shut off, how many tickets do you think you've written on that end of town? What, ballpark?
I mean, here, I mean, obviously, we've been getting a lot more complaints. I've talked to people down in the county, you know, they've said that obviously, the next day they could tell the people were wrong over here. So obviously, we went down there, we started running, yeah, we made certain stops. So, I mean, it was all over Facebook, it was all over the news, I mean, so.
Yeah, pretty quick enough to feel really long.
Yeah. And then on the, on the other report with the spreadsheet, there's, now this is just for the month of September, because October's still, you know, pending. But there's a total number of live citations and then the citation amounts. And, yeah, and then a couple of other data points that we're going to be dropping in there. And then no better time than now to talk about this report. But this report will be the draft of sort of a monthly report that we give to the board or to the council on the second meeting of the month, because obviously, first meeting is tight with the numbers. So I wanted to start creating a standardized report for you all, so that, you know, you can see stuff at a glance and know what the numbers are. And here we can, you know, look at trends and stuff like that. So now that I feel like we have our hands, you know, on all the systems, we're able to pull stuff like this pretty easily. So, and then if you wanted, Michelle, if you wanted like specific numbers through October, I could like, I could send an email tomorrow with what we've done since the cameras went down, or if you want to wait for the next meeting.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's negligible. You know, it's, it's been increasing the last few months and, yeah, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah. All right, and then if you don't mind, I can move on to the financial implications. So the city budgeted for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in income from these cameras this year in a budget ending, you know, twenty-five. So far, the city's received about forty, almost forty-six thousand dollars in fines, leaving about a two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar budget shortfall. Some of the mitigating items that we've done immediately to try to fill this hole, we put off the purchase of the budgeted police cruiser. That was between sixty and sixty-five thousand dollars, I hope it's a more conservative number. So we've put that off for this fiscal year, you know, pending, you know, some long-term decisions. We'd like to increase the expected budgets from written infractions. Right now, it's at twenty thousand dollars. We're going to increase that to forty thousand dollars. That's our estimate based on, you know, the increase in the municipal infractions so far. And then there's also a ten thousand dollar remodeling budget in there. We're going to forego that and any remodeling in the back, we're just going to get together, use our own tools, use our own paint, you know, get it done ourselves. And we'll be happy to have people help us when we decide to do that. And then there's still about a ten thousand dollar accounts receivable on unpaid camera tickets, so, you know, we'll still be able to collect much of that. But, so, out of the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, just some of the immediate things, we've been able to, you know, cut that down to about, you know, a little over a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we have it in the fund balance to be able to cover that for this fiscal year. I'm not suggesting that that's what the council decides to do, but, you know, the, the obvious question is, do we have the money to be able to weather a storm like this? And the answer is yes, there's, there's ample fund balance to do that. Obviously, we'll have some amended amendments proposed in the coming up meetings, and there may be some fund balance, you know, proposed switches at the end of the fiscal year to sort of compensate for that. But long-term, this is a serious thing, and we're going to have to be extra vigilant in this next budget season to make sure that we're not budgeting a loss here. So a lot of hard work ahead to make up for this. So that's what we have so far. I'm happy to answer questions, take suggestions, take directions on, you know, on ideas, or if you want to let this settle for a couple of weeks and think about it, that's fine too.
So the increase in the citations, municipal ones, they're being worked on, so maybe we can get them approved here in the next meeting or two?
As far as the, the amounts, yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. I've already been working with the police department to do a little research on what everybody else is charging for those. So, you know, that will certainly help. It won't solve the problem, but to your point, it'll, it'll, you know, every little penny counts now. So we'll get those up to, up to date, because they are pretty low.
Well, and we appreciate the sacrifices the police department is making.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, like Dino said, you know, speeders, you know, pick up, things like that, but, you know, we just stay ahead of it. Whenever we get the complaints, we go down, we're in real traffic, and then we try to split it up, but we're not one of those songs of time. You know, you try to split it up as much as you can, cover the busy times, and I mean, everybody knows we're not out all the time, if we can't cover it, it's going to work out, and, you know, the people, we do best we can and.
Don't you have park people?
What's that?
You have park people, right? You have four people, right?
Uh, three people, not many.
Three, four, ten, fifteen. I don't want to be known for the town either, that's just writing tickets left and right, because we, we have cops to pay for.
Yeah, of course.
Just being honest. You know, like, cannot, I, I don't want to offer already say that. Wrote my wages today and tickets, like, I don't, I want to be that town. Don't think I'm going to be that town.
Laura was going to say that.
And I, and I can tell you that we're not stopping people to fly over, you know, and things like that, I mean, but, uh...
But that's not fair to you either. We don't want you to have to think that.
Yeah.
I have to pay for my wage.
Yeah, that's, you know, if we can afford...
But at the same time, I mean, you know, the speed cameras are set at ten or eleven over in town, which is fast.
Mm-hmm.
You know, ten or eleven mile an hour going past, uh, or going back to a swimming pool, that's fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Megan, to your point, we've had a meeting on that very thing, that, like, we don't want to be pulling over everybody just for the sake of, of citations. So we're trying to stay in the spirit of what the speed cameras are doing, and just really focusing on people who are...
Sure.
Genuinely deserve to be pulled over and, and cited, and not get any more aggressive on the number of people. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. And then this, this is, it, I just printed this right before the, um, the meeting, uh, and this is a graph, and, and i- in one way, it's sort of interesting that it's happening now, but this is a graph showing in thousands the revenue from year to year, two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four. And you can see the efficacy of the speed cameras really worked, just based on, like, the number of citations that it's giving out. And I'll email this to everybody, um, and, uh, it's really interesting. And so this suggests that after another year or two, that those cameras would be generating almost nothing in revenue on a monthly basis anyway. So, uh, we're still going to have to do the budget work, and even if these do get overturned and the city decides it wants it back, um, there is some evidence of these diminishing returns, and so, you know...
Which is the point two, I mean.
That's the point of the safety, is people aren't getting second tickets from it, yeah.
It obviously worked, right.
Yeah.
The numbers worked, right.
Yeah, and so, um, yeah, it was just a curiosity to put it on, you know, because looking at the column of numbers is one thing, they'll see it on a graph, and, uh, you know, to see it just diminishing, like, the trend line here is going straight to zero, so, um, anyway, I thought that was an interesting factor.
Side note, your report shows you guys are doing some awesome stuff with your training and with the bicycle review too.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's definitely fun to, uh, yeah, we can talk about that, because that's like kind of you get back out there, you know, with the community, and, you know, like you guys say, you make a good point, it's not just a little traffic, unfortunately, it's a lot of the law too, so...
A lot of it's just PR, getting out and, you know, having a relationship with the public.
And we're kind of weird, because, uh, because Sarma's not in our county, or in our, I guess, jurisdiction, we were going to say, but, you know, it's not directly here, so there are a lot of, of, but at the same time, they told us a million times, they're like, we want to include you guys in the training, because you're going to be there quite a lot in time than anybody else. That's kind of, also, the point, we're going to do a little bit more training, more tactical type training, response type training, with Bay County, so, uh, Sarma, so that, that was another big push for me and I, um, to go to the CMT stuff, because then it'll send via, you know, a double, because you say we need to call out there.
We appreciate that, that you guys agree.
That's great.
I think we start that, what, or the CMT next week, and then we start, you know, the next Thursday or something? I think the twenty, or the first class through, probably, March.
A lot of hours to put in for them.
Yeah, something, though, I mean, those are a bunch of times, and, so kind of our goal is, uh, so it's Monday to Thursday, the reason that there's only two of us coming through one right now, is because somebody's got to work for us. So Brian works Monday, and then Chuck, or whoever, we have, that can help us out on Thursday, he's been at four hours a lot. But they've been really good in the past, and with all their cops, and all this stuff, and, like, if you need to go, there's emergency, like, go catch up with your neighbors, so fill your names, catch up with yours, so get your body, which is what...
Yeah.
We've been out of the school for a lot.
Thank you all for the brainstorming and the reporting, that's great communication. Alright, anything else on that? Alright, now we'll go to number eleven, motion to approve use of Civic Center for the winter farmers market, which will be one day a month, November through April.
I make the motion to approve the farmers market to use the Civic Center, November through April.
Second. Motion second to approve use of Civic Center.
Alright, so this is a recurring event, not a whole lot of description or discussion, that's, well, I don't say discussion, but nothing on our part to add that you don't already know about this event.
Will that, um, affect the Berry Merry Christmas?
No, he thought about coordinating with them, if possible, if they could be there at the same time.
Okay.
Bring more vendors.
Because that's just, there would just be December again.
Yeah, yeah, he checked on the dates that are available, and he had talked about, um, coordinating with them if possible.
Perfect.
Sounds great. No, it's going to be Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's usually Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, Saturday, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
He was going to be here to talk about it, and I said I would discuss it, and he goes, no, I want to be here. But yeah, it's all good, they did it last year, and it was really great. It was very successful for the market.
Okay, we'll go to vote, Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Alright, number twelve, motion to approve upgrades of Civic Center from the grant funds awarded to Berry Tender Childcare. Big motion. Second. Alright, motion and second to discuss.
Great, um, you want to come up and tell us about what's going to happen with the grant fund, what's needed, and all that fun stuff? I mean, we kind of already know a little bit, so...
You guys come up to the chair?
Yeah, that would be better, you know? Yeah. And project, so that the microphone's...
Well, maybe you've been writing the grant, so...
Yeah, so I wrote a grant for Upper Mississippi Ying Corporation. They gave us a grant last year to do upgrades to the, um, three of the rooms, and, um, we want to, we wanted to upgrade the line room, which is the last room, basically flooring, new windows, that kind of thing. So we wrote that grant, and then we rewarded it, so we just want to make sure we can continue with that. Uh, with those, I think it is flooring, windows, and then upgrades to the bathroom in that room, in that space as well.
Yeah, and an industrial dishwasher, that we put into our classroom, that we have our kitchen in there. We just wanted to make sure, today, that our industrial dishwasher will require a new outlet as well, because we don't have, and then a cabinet remodel.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I guess we're just asking, since we've got a group of clients to support it.
Yeah, so this is new information today, so we'll look into, I don't know, is that like a two-twenty outlet that you need, like, is there any specification about it?
I think it said like two-seventy or something.
Okay, so we'll look at the specifications, and then we'll have a request in the next board meeting. Um, it shouldn't be, you know, it's going to be a negligible amount, regardless, so we'll get the information on what it's going to cost when they have it on the next agenda.
And the line room of the old preschool room?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that floor right now is already a tile floor, and so we would just put, uh, wood down on the top of that, what happens?
Right, we don't run into the issue, we ran into...
Yeah, because there's no carpet in there, right?
We don't, we don't go right on top.
That would be great.
Alright, any other questions?
That's going to be in the closed session.
No, the, the door.
You bring it up now, yeah, we, we, we don't have the information on, like, the cost or anything like that yet, so I didn't put it on this, we couldn't legally put it on this one for consideration, because we don't know the cost or anything, so...
We have that, alright, I...
I know, but I don't.
So, we have fire marshal come, and we gave those boards to you, correct, right?
Yeah, 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 we gave those boards.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so, um, there, we have second door in the dust room, which is our main care room, there is no longer that second door, so the fire marshal says they need a second entrance, so we need to put one in. Um, we've talked with SMI, where we've got quotes for it. Um, basically, they quoted us for an egress door, so an outdoor door for, for that building. Um, if we, if it was too costly for us, we would, we have to quote for the inside as well, she would send that to us. Um, but yeah, in order to stay up to code, fire marshal comes back in three years, um, and so we have to do something for it, we have to...
We were unaware when we were, when we remodeled that room, that that was a requirement, two doors in there, so it was just a, when we came back, we was like, well, that door was actually supposed to be there, and we're in...
That second door, that go into like the lo- like the locker room?
Yeah, so there's actually, there's actually three doors, and we blocked one door, or